Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, October 30th, 2017, meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectmen. And we'll start it off with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we just have one announcement here tonight, and it's, Chief Wall confirmed that the National Grid put out some information today at 4:00, and reports that there's 1,939 homes without power in Pembroke as of 4:00 PM today. The Bryantville area was the area that was the most hard-hit, and power is on in the center of town in most areas up north. National Grid crews are out working in Pembroke and have opened most roads. The crews are still in the assessment and tree-clearing stage of what they may turn out to be a multi-day operation. Additional crews have been brought in from neighboring states and are staging in Brockton to be deployed throughout the hottest heat areas. Residents can expect the restoration of power to begin sometime tomorrow. The Pembroke Library will be open Tuesday, October 31st, at 9:30 for residents who need to charge their phone, tablets, and laptops. The very first thing on the schedule is the chief, and he would like to introduce the new offices to the Board of Selectmen. Would you like to come in, Chief?
Are you still without power, Chief?
Still without power.
Join those of us from Darrellville.
But, an update, I saw some National Grid crews on my way in here, and I talked with National Grid a little while ago, and they understand that we have a school, senior complex, a group home, and the Innoable Village is all without power in that area, so they're gonna try and prioritize and get us some help down here and see if they can get that power going. So, we're in pretty good shape, they've got the roads clear, and that wasn't that way earlier today. We're making some progress. So, just kind of bear with us, and then it's another, glad to be in Pembroke Day. So, back in July, we began the process, I came to the Board of Selectmen about increasing the permanent intermittent staffing levels for Pembroke, and I explained to them that we depend on the permanent intermittence. I mean, we put these men and women through the paces, they go to the Special Police Academy on their own, and they learn policing skills there. And then when they come out, they do 180 hours of on-the-job training in the police cruises with our field training offices. So they get to be pretty well-known within our department, and they get to know the streets, and, I mean, they're all Pembroke people, so this really gives them a little bit more appreciation of their town. They've been to 911 School, which is another 60-something hours of learning how to run the dispatch center, and then on top of that, they have to take the emergency medical dispatch training, which is another 24 hours of training. So, by the time they get to this stage, they're very capable of working in a cruiser, and we use them to work shifts to keep their skills ready prior to them going to the full-time academy. So, I think what we'll do is, I'm gonna introduce you to our newest acquisition, and I'll get back to my part-time people, because apparently Jax is a little impatient. Back in July, we also talked about the addition of a K-9 unit to the Pembroke Police, and we were very fortunate to have Officer Mark DeGravio, one of our former PIs and full-time police officers now, had a certified, ready-trained K-9, and we've been able to incorporate Jax into the Pembroke Police. I never realized how important the dog was until I got involved in search and rescue. And, they're the first ones out, they cover a lot of ground, and you say, "Well, how many people go lost or missing?" We've had a lot, between Pembroke Hospital, people with Alzheimer's, people with autism, and runaways. We have quite a few. So, I wanted to introduce you to Jax. You guys always seem to be on the outskirts of what we do, and I know you're fully supportive of us, so I want to make sure you see what we're doing.
This is Jax, he's been with me since he was a puppy, I've got him at nine months old. He's, he just turned six. He has patrol and narcotics train, so he's good for searching for people, as well as illegal drugs, and trying to point him to as much use as we can here in town.
Very vocal, huh?
Yeah.
At least you know he's around.
He does this all day long when he's in the car.
It's interesting, when he gets a radio call, it seems like every call Jax is ready to go.
Oh, yeah.
Not sure Mark's always ready to go.
You can always see him chirping in the background.
Probably wants to eat, if he finds something in there, you know?
Yeah, that's how he gets rewarded, so, he does his work and then he gets to eat.
Well, Michael, thank you very much, and again, we've increased, it's great to have a patrol dog, search and rescue narcotics. Miss anything?
Uh, well, some.
So, we've really, you know, increased what we can do in the police department, and, you know, they live together, they share a car together, and it's an old one, but we'll take care of that someday. Start early, that's all.
That's good, I'm glad you brought him in, that's nice.
All right.
Good boy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll get back to our PIs, they just got sworn in upstairs as permanent intermittents, and after all, Mr. Thorne was part of our processing when we do the hiring, the background checks, his civil service, they come off the civil service list, so they are eligible when we need to fill ranks, they're all ready to go. So, our first gentleman is Justin Turvey, Justin is a Marine Corps veteran, and after the Marine Corps, he went down to Tennessee, and he went through the police academy there, the Peace Officer Academy, and was a full-time peace officer in Tennessee. When he moved up to this neck of the woods, he worked for the Sheriff's Department, BCI, for nine years. He would come into our station, we're very familiar with the process of prisoners and helping us with all the crime scenes and stuff. So, very fortunate that Justin was at the top of the civil service list, and he's now a full-time permanent intermittent, no, permanent intermittent police officer, hoping to become full-time, he's on the, on our list. Our next gentleman is Mike McCarthy, there's Mike, over here hiding behind me, Mike's a little shy. Mike's a Pembroke kid, born and raised here, went to Silver Lake before it was Pembroke, and Mike runs his own business, oh, sorry, Justin's three kids, I wanted to mention that, because family's kind of an important thing in why we do what we do. Mike put himself through the Special Police Academy, he came in before there was any opportunities, and he said, "I really want to do this." But, okay, no promises, he went and did it, and he was such a good kid, we decided to make him a special, and that he's, he's did real well in the exam, and he's put in all his time, runs his own business, and on top of that, he's a dad. So, these guys are, just one in as permanent intermittent officers. Last week at town meeting, the town voted to approve for two full-time police officers. It's great to have a list ready to go, I'm glad to say that the next day, Mr. Thorne and myself were able to complete the entire process. They now have seats in the Redding Academy, starting January 8th, Elvis' birthday, and they're all ready to go. It's all been taken care of. So, the first candidate is Adam Barrows, Adam was a PI for the last two and a half, three years. He's been waiting his turn, he's gone to the academy, he's gone to 911 School, he's done all the things that he's gotta do. He's currently working for, at the airport at TSA, up there, in law enforcement capacity, and he has two kids, and he's also born and raised in Pembroke his whole life. And finally, but not without, we have Mary Beth Simmons. Mary Beth comes from a long line of police officers, her father was Dick Simmons, sergeant on our job for a long time, and he had the patience to put up with me for all those years. Her brother John is on our department as a sergeant. Mary Beth did extremely well on the exam, she's gone through all of the other trainings, everything that we need to do, and she's been on top of that, she's also worked with the Boston Police, and did some time in with the Brockton Police, and she's got her degree in criminal justice from Stonehill, I'm sorry, you know, your criminal justice degree from Bridgewater State University. So, we have a great group of people, and this is why we need to continue to build up our fine team, so that when we have openings, with 24 hours, we can have them filled. And I look forward to these guys getting their training in, and hopefully they'll be on the road by May, if everything works out right in the academy, and we'll move forward. So, that's what I wanted to do, I wanted to update you where we are, thank you for your support, and thank the town, and just very good can place.
We appreciate it very much that you came in, it's nice to see the offices, some of them that have been put on, I don't even know what they look like, so, so that's nice.
I, I, that's the art when you told me the last time, so I made sure that we're here. Do you have any questions, or I just?
And some of them didn't know me, because when I go bang on the door, they say, "What do you want?", you know, "Open the door", you know?
Pretty much everyone knows you. So, thank you for your, for your time, I really appreciate it.
It was great that you brought them in, we appreciate that.
Justin, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you for coming in.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Adam, welcome.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Justin.
I know, it's a big wedding.
Yeah, it was great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15, and is being recorded for broadcast for future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. So, Nathan Jerome from 99 Restaurants of Boston, here? I'll come right up, sir.
Hi, I just took over, I got moved to the Pembroke 99, so I haven't been put on a liquor license. Definitely excited for the move, I know it's a great area, great restaurant, they've done a lot of work over there, and I'm definitely excited for the group that I've seen, because that's where I trained when I first started with the 99, so I've seen a lot of change over there. So, with your blessing, I'd, you know, like to take over and hopefully become a great part of that work.
It's, see that you have all of your things in order, is there anything else that he needs to do, Sabrina's all set here? We have, anybody, any questions or comments, or suggested motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to grant the request to the 99 Restaurants of Boston's LLC, doing businesses, 99 Restaurant, a public for changing manager of common vixial and all-alcohol license, number 00051, RSO 960, exercise at 166 Church Street in Pembroke, and it is from Christopher Peltier to Nathan Jerome.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome to Pembroke.
Any camarades ask for me, I'm there all the time, so.
That's right, very good restaurant, we've been there a number of times, good food. Here, here's a 7:30, we've got a little time on that. Need a vote to accept land donation of 46.7 acres of open space parcel from Washington ARL off Bryson Way and Bryson Way Extension, Assessor's Map and Parcel E. The Conservation Commission has requested that the board consider a vote to accept the land donation of Assessor's Parcel E10 71A off of Bryson Way and Bryson Way Extension, our open space lot located off Old Washington Street.
Mr. Chairman, I, on behalf of the Conservation Commission and the Open Space Committee, I would recommend the board accept this donation of some 50 acres of land, which abuts at least a more recent purchase of the Nike property on Barker Street, and that property, which goes from Route 14 all the way south to the parcel that is being donated, so this would add almost an additional 50 acres of open space to the town.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommendation of the town administrator.
A second for a question. We're now collecting real estate taxes on this property?
I believe so.
Do we know how much that is, and what other benefit is the town gonna get for taking this land over? Is it just gonna be open space for people to hike on?
Right, that's correct.
Trails, that type of thing?
There won't be kind of party being.
And to further that point, Arthur, the landmass accumulated by the town counts toward our 1.5% of town-owned land to guard us against.
The next one.
Party fees.
Good point.
I want the party fees.
Good point, so I would, my question is answered, I will second the motion.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There's also a request for Conservation Commission execute a quick claim deed, does that need to be voted on yet?
Yes, sir, you'll be signing that.
Okay, so that's just something we signed it on it, took a special vote on that? Okay. So, we do need, we have a recommendation from Police Chief Wall to vote to declare the following item surplus property, a 2015 Ford Explorer utility, VIN number 1 FM 5K8 AR7 FGA 88570.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
2015 utility for any vehicle, two years old, is unusual to be declaring it surplus property. From past experience, is there a particular story behind this one?
I was talking to Sabrina about this, and I think that at this particular point, we don't have a use for this thing.
We don't, and it's no longer under warranty, and the repairs that it's going to need will exceed.
Yeah, I remember the.
The cost of replacing the vehicle.
Yeah, the chief has brought that issue before us on why it's important to.
It has some useful life left, but it will, the repairs that it needs to be in operating police vehicle are excessive.
Okay. Thank you. Although it's only three years old, it, I mean, you could run 100,000 a year 24/7. I mean, that could have 200 and some thousand miles on it, I don't know what the mileage is, but I'm sure that it sure could have.
To your point, the town administrator asked the DPW mechanics to review it, because it was so young, and they compared it that it needs far more than.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to declare the 2015 Ford Explorer utility surplus property at the request of the Pembroke Police Chief.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Consider the appointment of Andrew Sullivan to the Town Government Study Committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to appoint Andrew Sullivan to the Town Government Study Committee.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just that Andrew's been very active in town, he's been working on the Community Center Committee, and he wants to join the Subcommittee also, so we're willing to take every interested person that's, that's available, and Andrew's gonna be a great asset to this committee, I know it.
And I believe he will be. I would definitely be in favor of that. Good guy.
Yeah, I'm delighted we get somebody of his caliber interested.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I say it. Consider vote to create capital building fund study committee.
Bill, can I just say something big on this?
Sure.
I was approached by a few folks at a fall town meeting that wanted to press, press this board into making certain that a capital fund study committee is formed, so that we have enough people that are involved from various towns, boards, and committees that have interest in the new buildings, the police, fire, and DPW buildings, that not only have interest in them, but also have the energy and want to exert the effort to help look for funding, whether it be grants, state, federal grants, examine the town of Pembroke's books, make sure that we expend the monies that we can and any funds that we have handy, and then also, alternatively, look at what any tax ramifications are, proposition two and a half implications, and with the goal in mind to keep any proposition, potential proposition two and a half overrides to the minimum. So, that's, that's the impetus of why I asked you to put this on the meeting here tonight, so that we can gather up the folks that not only have the interest, but want to exert the effort to help us, help the town administrator, town accountant, treasurer, the assessors, and it, it really is a group effort that's gonna be required for this, because these are very large capital expenditures that are on the horizon. So, that, that was my impetus for asking you to put this on the agenda.
Okay. Probably would only be, be right then to have you chair it until the first open meeting, and then they can vote a chairperson in.
I'd be willing to do that, and I don't think we need to choose members tonight, but we do need to form the committee so that we can seek interested people. I know there's some folks that are sitting here tonight that I would absolutely expect to be on the committee, so I make a motion to form and create a cap, a committee to settle, study capital building funding options.
Second.
Okay, any other statements, comments?
Well, I'd like just to make a comment, I certainly agree with Dan, that we all were at the town meeting, and we heard the presentations from the three departments, and very well-done, explained the need to the residents, and now we need to put that effort into studying how we're gonna pay for this. As Dan has said, these are very expensive issues that we have to deal with, but we need to deal with them, and we need to get people who bring an expertise, or a knowledge, or just the desire to spend the necessary time in finding out what options are available to the town. And so, because of that, I certainly support this suggestion.
Yeah, and one thing further, for the folks that are interested in it, you know, everyone on the advisory committee would be, would be a great candidate, but we can't have the whole advisory committee on it, same thing with the DPW, and the point being is, we need the committee to be manageable and effective, so what we need are representatives of various boards and committees, so that an entire advisory committee, for instance, their voice is heard through a representative. So, we need to make sure that we're not unwieldy, we need to be efficient and effective, but it's also malleable, we can, we can change if we need to. So, anyone that is interested, please contact the Board of Selectmen's office, and as soon as I get a list full of names, we'll get started with discussions, even before the committee is actually seated, we can, we can converse, phone call, emails, and we'll get started right away, that's important.
Okay, we have a motion in a, in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It'll be five to zero. Good luck with that committee, hopefully that helps. Okay, I don't see this on the agenda, but we do have a request from, a board vote, open the recycling center for three Sundays, there is a need for Sunday hours in the recycling center for leaf disposal. So, they're requesting the Board of Selectmen to vote, open the recycling center for an additional Sunday hours, November 5th, November 12th, and November 19th, for leaf disposal as has been done in the past years.
Mr. Chairman, I believe our case has an amendment to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think given the circumstances of the last day or day and a half with the storm and the amount of wood that has come down, number of trees that have been cut up, that we take this immediate coming Saturday and extend the hours from 9:00 to 2:00 to 9:00 to 5:00, to give people an opportunity to get some of the tree limbs and things in the brush cleared out of their houses, and this way they don't have to rush to, you know, some people that are available Saturday are not available Sunday and vice versa. So I think we give them a little extra time, and it's not an insurmountable cost to the town, it's, I'm gonna guess it's less than $400 to keep it open.
Okay, so is that in the form of motion?
Yes, I'll make that a form of motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
So, in addition to this Saturday being open at 5:00, the recycling center will be open on Sundays, November 5th, 12th, and 19th.
Right, that's the motion that I believe you just carried out.
Right. We have the vote to accept the minutes of October 16th.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board accept the minutes of the Selectmen's meeting of October 16th as written.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote to accept the minutes of October 24th.
And Mr. Chairman, I would also move that the board accept the minutes of October 24th of the Selectmen's meeting as written.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Do we have any old business?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple things on our old business.
Okay.
Just wanna give you guys an update on that project I was talking about a few weeks back, to help care for the parcels of land in town that aren't currently being intended to properly, with the assistance of the Chamber of Commerce and some other folks around town. Sabrina and I have put together a list of ideal candidates in terms of those parcels, and we're in contact with the Chamber of Commerce, so we should get the ball rolling on that very soon.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, one other thing, for the folks watching at home, this new committee to look into the building of the future of Pembroke, the new police building, the new fire building, other buildings, a great opportunity to get involved in town. There are also many other openings on many other boards that are doing important work, so if anybody wants to be involved, give Sabrina at the Town Hall a call, and she'll send you up.
Awesome. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I believe this is appropriate under old business. As you know, I'm a member of the delegate to the Old Colony Planning Council, and I was at the meeting on Wednesday. was at the meeting on Wednesday. We were discussing the direct technical assistance grant that was offered to the town of Pembroke that the planning board took advantage of. The planning board and the Old Colony Planning Council did a study on what business owners need to know to successfully open and expand business in Pembroke. So there's a packet that will shortly be on the town website that's available for anyone that wants to open a business in Pembroke, and it assists them navigating the town boards, committees, and the red tape as it is to easily get through the town of Pembroke to open a business, to encourage business in town. And, you know, I commend the planning board and Matt, the planning director upstairs, for seeking this grant out and working with the Old Colony Planning Council in developing this packet. It's very interesting, so when it's on the town website, I encourage folks to utilize it. And as an addendum to this also, they include a list of available commercial and industrial sites in the town of Pembroke. All the commercial and industrial sites that are available, it includes the square footage, the listing broker, phone numbers, and information, so if folks are interested in starting a business in Pembroke, it's not an easy, thanks to the planning board and the Old Colony Planning Council.
Mr. Chairman, to follow up on Dan's comment, as a member of the Chamber Board of Directors newly appointed, I'd be happy to share that with the Board of Directors when they meet this Friday coming up.
Very good, I'll save you this hard copy until the other one is available online.
Great, thank you.
Town administrators report?
Yeah, I'm pleased to announce that we'll be hosting here at the Veterans Hall Strategic Planner Retreat that'll be set up by Suffolk University, the Cold Rivers, who emceed that retreat that we had up at the Country Club five years ago. And so we'll have two sessions, one for department heads will be Wednesday morning, November the 15th, here at the Veterans Hall, and then we've invited all boards and commissions, anybody that serves as a volunteer for the town of Pembroke, we invite them to attend a Saturday morning retreat that'll be here at the Veterans Hall. Both sessions are going to be from nine to 12. And November 15th for staff and November 18th for boards and commission members, including you all. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And that's here in this?
Yes. In this room.
Is there anything under the House of Selectmen? Anything under new business? Okay, I think it's 7:30. Mr. Whisker over 7:30. And we have the Animal Control Officer, William Hart, and it's, we have a police report of an incident on October 5th, 2017, of a tan white pit bull, greyhound, mixed breed, male, and the owner being Brian Shea of 174 Frontis Lane. We're going to have a dog hearing, and wait till everybody gets in the room, I guess. Okay, are you going to do the swearing in, Sabrina?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all parties who plan to give testimony in this hearing must be sworn in at the opening of the dog hearing under the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of the General Laws.
All right, anyone that need to give testimony tonight?
Oh, we all want.
Could you please, guys? Thank you. Laura?
Richard.
Is there anybody else in the room that's going to testify?
Kathy, I'm so sorry, what's your last name?
Kathy C Y R.
Yeah. I just saw another person from Frontis Lane come in, but Chief, are you going to testify? And is there a person beside you going to testify?
I'm from Frontis Lane, so perhaps I will have a comment on that.
Okay, you just have to get sworn in, that's all.
You have to stay out.
Yeah.
And your name?
Carissa.
Carissa, last name?
Amanda Monsby.
I speak for all of America.
Last name?
Okay, all right, folks, raise your right hands, please. I swear that the evidence that I shall give shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God. Thank you.
Okay, could we hear from the Animal Control Officer, Bill Hart?
Hello, gentlemen.
Greetings.
Okay, I was out on sick leave when this happened, so Lisa took the original reports, Lisa Colady, the animal inspector.
Yeah.
But what had happened was that, let me have the names here, Brian Shea's pit bull, the one that was in the attack in April of this year, got loose and killed another dog in the neighborhood that belonged to Laura Cavilla?
No, it belonged to, no, he said the other one. Oh, the other one, yes. It didn't belong to me.
No, that's okay. Yeah.
And we got two stories, one from Brian Shea and one from Laura's husband, I don't know, I don't have it, Richard. And they were pretty close. I got another one from the vet's office, which said that the dog was on a leash originally. I was told that the little dog went out onto the street for cul-de-sac, and Brian's dog got loose and went out and attacked it and killed it. My thing that I want here today is I want to see that this dog is labeled as dangerous. This is the second attack, been killed in six months. The first one was in April, April 4th. I want him labeled as dangerous, I want an order for me to take him and hold him for the 10 days while he has a chance to go to court and, I don't want to come up with the right word, but, so he has a right to appeal it. And at the end of 10 days, I don't want the dog in Pembroke anymore. The dog is dangerous. It's, this is twice in six months that it's killed other dogs. I don't think we should keep it.
Okay, anything else over?
No, it's about it. Like I said, I wasn't here for the initial attack. I was here after I found out about it, and I wanted to get the information from Lisa and everything else. That's why I don't even have an incident report, but I'm sure, no, Police Department did do an incident report on me there.
Yeah, they did. Officer Reddy did?
Did they? Did they do one? Okay. I wasn't sure if they did or they didn't.
Officer Reddy did a report.
Okay.
Is he around tonight, Chief?
But I don't think we should trust the dog, and we can't really trust the owner because this is the second time in six months. And I don't know if you're familiar that four or five years ago, his dog, Smokey, killed another dog in the neighborhood. That dog has gone into seance now.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Brian Shea.
Mr. Shea, you weren't sworn in. Mr. Shea? Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so that's why I think that this dog should be labeled as dangerous, and he's going to be dangerous to anybody in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question for Mr. Hart.
Okay.
Can I ask him a question? Back in April, the first incident that was brought before us.
Yes.
My memory tells me that the conditions that this board laid down on the owner of the dog was that it would be walked twice a day, at specific times?
No, 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 that's a different, that's a different case.
That's a different one.
Yeah, that was a different case.
Okay.
That was a different case.
Do we have?
You're talking about one on the other side of town.
All right, do we have conditions that were established after the first incident with this dog?
Yeah.
There was a letter sent out?
Yeah, there was a letter sent out.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, he did. There was one sent out.
Yes.
I don't see whether he received it or not, but.
Yeah, there was a letter that was sent out to him and explained everything.
Yeah. Carrie?
That we had had to hear it, but like I said, I wasn't on duty, so the dog is vaccinated and coming for babies. That wasn't an issue. But my feeling is that the dog is, the owner can't control it. This is the second time it broke loose, and both times that it broke loose, it killed another small dog, so I don't see it being a good situation in that neighborhood.
He did receive that letter, he signed for it, yes.
Yeah.
So he did receive it.
Well, Bill, in these cases that we have a hearing on, this board relies on you and the police officer, Lisa Colady, whoever was at the scene, and we read your reports or their reports, whatever it is.
Yeah.
And that gives us all of the information that we have seen. We weren't there, of course. So we depend on those reports and the facts as they are given to us in that report. So your recommendation that you've just given us is that your official recommendation?
That's my official recommendation, is that the dog seemed dangerous. He has a right under law to appeal to Plymouth District Court, the findings of you gentlemen, and it's a 10-day process. He has a right to appeal. If we, I want to take the dog, hold the dog for that time that the appeal, if any appeal comes up, and at the end of it, if the court changes your decision, I'm going to have him pay restitution to whatever charges we have for board and taking care of the animal for the time until it's either released or we decide what's going to happen to it. Deemed dangerous, the dog's not going to be adoptable. It's just not going to be adoptable. It's one of these things that the only way it will be able to be adopted is it has to be to some organization or to a town, a person within the town, and the town, like you gentlemen have to authorize the dog to come into town. And after it's already killed two dogs here in Pembroke, I don't foresee very many towns writing an authorization or giving them, taking the liability of taking this dog into their town.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to hear from Laura Ann Cavilla. You are the owner of the dog or the?
No, I was fostering for Yorkies Inc. Kathy owns the agency.
Okay.
I've been fostering for two years. How far back do you want me to go?
The only thing we're really concerned with is this incident?
Okay, because I can tell you about his owning his dog, Smokey, and how that went.
Yeah.
Just to show you some background, but I don't have to tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, I've been, we've been living now, I'm going to stop back.
This happened on October 5th?
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, so whatever transpired on October 5th, that's what we'd like to know.
That's what you'd like to know? You don't want me to go back to what I witnessed in April?
No.
Okay, all right, so I foster these little dogs. I don't know if you care to see the picture of little Mari. Would you care to see a picture of her?
Sure, that's fine, sure.
This is little Mari. She lived in a cage for two years. She was going to be adopted. She's laying out enjoying the sun. So I was working on that Thursday, and I came home from work for lunch, and her little bed and everything was packed up inside the kitchen, and I knew Kathy wouldn't come and pick up the dog because she doesn't even know where I live, and she usually calls me and we meet somewhere and I trade off the dogs. So she didn't come running, she usually comes running, and so anyway, I walk into the house, and my husband's in the bedroom, and he's crying, he's sorry because, you know, Brian Shea's dog, my little Mari. So I didn't want to hear anything from my husband, I just wanted to know where the dog was. He said it's down at Dr. Tease. I went down to the vet. She was already dead, cardiac arrest. I held her for a little bit, and that was it. And I haven't been really able to eat or sleep, or I'm just sick to my stomach over some dog. I don't think that I or anybody on my street has to live in fear. The dog is dangerous. He does not walk it. In all fairness to the dog, it's in his home all day long. This summer, it was in his home all day long with no air conditioning, no windows open, howling all day long. It's unfair for that dog, too. The dog has to leave Pembroke. If whatever transpires, a 10 days, whatever, I want the dog off the street, and I'm going to ask you, please, 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 remove the dog from our street. Mr. Shea is not a good dog owner. I'm not a good dog owner because Mari's dead today, okay? We're both not good dog owners. I'm not going to foster anymore, and I think that he should have free rid of his dog. And I know that he can go back out in two weeks and buy another dog, I know he can do that, but we'll deal with that when that happens. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the husband, Richard?
I had Mari out in the backyard that day, October 5th, and she was sitting on the cushion on my wall. Phone rang. It was a nice day, the screen was open, the slide up. Went in the house, answered the phone, had my coffee with me, threw the coffee in the microwave, warmed it up, took the call. This all happened in a span of 30 seconds, 45 seconds, and then I heard a yelp, and I knew it wasn't a good bark, and so I immediately stopped what I was doing, went out the front door, and encountered Brian Shea working his way up my driveway. Brian said something to the effect, your dog's just been bit, I think it's in shock, and I started calling him an a-hole. And followed him, he turned around, walked down the driveway, leading me to the dog. I followed him, the dog was on his property, and the dog had a puncture wound in its side and was bleeding. I picked up the dog immediately, repeatedly called him, he tried to engage in conversation, I had nothing to say to him other than what I told you previously, and then I brought the dog into the kitchen, grabbed some paper towels, blanched the wound. I could tell the dog was in shock, ran out to the shed, grabbed a shed towel, wrapped the dog in a towel, and fortunately, veterinarian is five minutes down the street, grabbed the keys, threw the dog in the car, and down to the vet, and within 10 minutes from the time I heard the yelp, she was at Dr. Tease. And then before I had a chance to make a decision as to whether I wanted to have her resuscitated and have surgery. as to whether I wanted to have her resuscitated and have surgery performed, cardiac arrest, and the dog could not be resuscitated. And I just wanna say in closing, as being the person that was there at the scene, two other items I can add. That time of the year, the way the sun shines, uh, the dogs tend, uh, naturally seek the sunshine. And at that time of the day, the sun was only shining down on the second half of the driveway where it meets the common area. So Mari is always within my sight, but I, I claim guilty for letting her out of my sight for thirty or forty-five seconds. And she went down to the driveway assumed, which I've seen her do before, and lay on the asphalt and soak up the sun. We've had other dogs that do the same thing. In the morning, they go down by the pond, the morning sun, they lay in the grass, and they soak up the sun like a lizard. So, I can't say, as a witness, that Mari was actually on Brian's property. So it would be his word against mine if he chose to dispute that. But I believe with that end of the driveway being a common area between my neighbor across the street and Brian, that the dog has every right to be down the end of my driveway. And I think he had, he had an unregistered vehicle parked between the line of sight where he was with the dog. At first, I was told that he had the dog under his control. He's a six-foot man, you can see, two-hundred pounds plus. And telling me that the dog broke free, that's not good. If, if a guy like that can't control his dog with that size. And then I heard the second version of the story, that the dog was not under control. Now, I think Mari, being the little toy that she is, that the dog caught sight of the movement underneath his unregistered vehicle, and it didn't matter whether it was a squirrel or anything, but it just, that's what it's made to do. And it bolted, and it dragged it, and it just so happens where it dropped it landed on his property. That's what I believe happened. And then in closing, I just wanna say, as a homeowner living next door to Brian, I don't think that I should, every time I go in my yard, have to carry a phone and a can of mace or horn spread with me. Okay? Thank you.
And excuse me, Andrew, have some on the, the thing-
Well, just hang on a second here now. I just wanna ask the board if the board has any questions for you while you're up there as a witness, so. I do have one question.
Sure.
Did you see the dog off of your property someplace else? Or was it always on your property?
I've seen the dog before.
No, 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 this was at, this incident.
At this incident?
Yeah.
No.
So you, you didn't see the dog where it was, then?
I didn't bring the dog out that often, to be honest with you, just to go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
And I either had the dog on a leash, or there were times, now I do wanna add this. Brian has a company truck, or he did, okay? Works for a plumber. So he has a white pickup truck with a company insignia on the truck. The truck comes and goes on a fairly regular basis. It leaves at six o'clock in the morning, and it comes back at four P.M., roughly. Okay? That being said, that was a weekday, okay? And the truck was not there. So, I plead guilty that I assumed he was at work. Now, that didn't have any effect on my decision to bring Mari out without a leash. But the fact of the matter remains that his truck was not there. So, when I heard the yelp, yes, subconsciously, I was very surprised to see him coming out, because I thought he was at work. And then it turns out that, for whatever reason, he wasn't. And he didn't have his company truck. But that didn't affect my decision as far as how the events unfolded that day.
Right, but the, the question is, did you see the dog leave your property? Or did you see it on somebody else's property?
That, at that time?
Yeah.
At that incident?
Yeah.
No, no. The dog, like I said, was on the cushion on my wall right outside my deck when I went in the house.
No, 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 I'm talking about after you heard-
The yelp.
After you heard the yelp, you went out there to recover the dog and bring it in the house. Where was it when you saw it?
The dog was on his property, on the front end, on the other side of his unregistered vehicle.
Okay.
Yes.
His dog took it back to-
So it was on his property?
Yes.
Did your dog have a leash on it?
No.
Okay. Is anybody else on the-
Did you see my dog?
Yeah, hang on a second here, you'll have your shot, all right? Um, does anybody else on the board, do you have any questions? Or Richard?
What time of the day did this all take place?
Uh, oh, I wanna say somewhere around ten-thirty, quarter of eleven in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. You say that you had something else you wanted to add, uh?
I wanted to add that we live on a dead-end street. My husband's retired. It's a very, very quiet neighborhood. Mr. Shea would leave early in the morning and come back. My husband was very, we were very careful with the dogs when Mr. Shea's van was in the yard, because we knew Mr. Shea was home, and we knew his dog might be out. So, it doesn't bring her back, it's not an excuse, but this is why, you know, Richard might have went in the house, she was out in the back. We would never leave her unattended. But we did.
Okay. Is there anybody else now that, that wants to, um, add anything to the story?
I have that.
You wanna get up here, please? Just identify yourself so that, so that we know who you are.
My, yeah, she was, Laura was there as well. My name's Amanda Monte, this is Chrissy.
Chrissy.
Right.
My dog was also attacked and died from his injuries on April 3rd. He was on a leash, and he was attacked, and Mr. Shea's dog was not.
I was walking, her two dogs, her two small dogs, um, each on a leash to the end of the road. We had turned around, and we're on our way back. And, uh, we turned around, I looked back, and I was probably in front of her house. And I noticed a dog bolting, just running straight towards us, out of his front yard. And I tried to move quickly, it was just upon us instantly, just looked right at her dog, Miles, and just attacked him, grabbed him, bit him. It was a very long process. I was screaming. Um, I was trying to get the dog off of him. I got bit. Uh, both of my hands were bit, I fell. Uh, I could not get the dog off. I work with animals-
This was in April, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This was in April.
I work-
Does this have anything to do with this incident?
This is the same dog that killed-
No, I know, I understand that, but I mean-
She was walking my dog for me, just to show how he's a-
Oh, no, we understand that, we have that other report.
Right, we're just, you know, concerned.
From that incident.
Yeah, I work with dogs, and I've seen dog aggression before. This is definitely a dog-aggressive dog.
Yeah.
Um, I don't feel safe walking on the street personally, and especially with my dog with me. I do, with walking her other dog now, I do not feel safe. Um, I always carry mace on me, and I still don't feel safe with that. I've seen many, I work with animals, I've been a dog trainer, I work for a nonprofit animal shelter, and with animal-controlled dogs and loose dogs. And I've seen many instances of dogs fighting. This was very, very bad. It was intentionally, he was trying to kill the dog I had. Um, and I screamed and screamed for help. He never came out, it seemed like the longest time. Um, the dog had absolutely nothing on him, no leash, no harness, no collar, no anything. And he finally came out and tackled the dog. And they helped me, I, they were calling me to their house so I could get away. And I was bullying the dogs. And then he got loose again from his grass, came over, attacked the dog again. Um, and he finally was able to get him off again. And then they gave me a ride with dogs. And Miles died from his injuries.
Yeah. He suffered for eight hours.
Any of the other secretary have any questions?
I'd just like to hear the testimony beginning to end. To be honest with you, keep it going. That's just how I feel.
What do you mean?
The testimony from everyone who wants to speak.
Oh, sure. Right, yeah.
Thank you.
When, when she was being bitten going on, I heard, "Help, help, help." I went outside, and Mr. Shea was down on all fours trying to hold the dog down. That's, that's how aggressive the dog is.
Were you yelling and screaming the whole time?
I was so aggressive.
All right, all right.
Exactly, I was yelling and screaming.
Excuse me.
Because I was outraged.
Excuse me. But this is gonna be an orderly meeting, and I know everybody's upset, and the, you know, and you, you know, you feel bad about all this stuff, but I don't want it to get out of control.
Right.
All right, everybody is gonna have their opportunity, and they will go through me. There will be no back-and-forth stuff. You'll address the board, uh, which I'm the chairman, and ask to speak. I will allow you to come up to the microphone and speak. Everybody's gonna have that opportunity. Otherwise than that, we're not gonna have this room, get in or fisticuffs in there or whatever. So it's gonna be nice and calm. I wanna hear everybody's comments and questions or answers or whatever to this incident. It's a very concerning thing for me. Mr. Hart?
I think a lot of the testimony you're gonna hear, Mr. Bolton, is explaining the dangerousness to the dog.
I understand that.
What dangerous the dog is.
Yep, I fully understand that, but everybody has a right to speak. And, um, and not to be interrupted, so. Would you like to come up and just, um, address yourself to the board and tell us what-
Yes, my name is Sandra Simon. I live on Furness Lane now for the past thirty-seven years or so. And in, um, living in that neighborhood so long, I, I've met a lot of my neighbors, and we all are a lot of, um, dog owners, and we love the dog in the neighborhood. But it seems now we're all warning each other of the public danger of the Shea dog, not to go down that part of the neighborhood with our dogs, for fear that they might have the end of these poor pets owners behind me and have to watch their dogs get killed right before their eyes. So I wanted the board to know what the impact of the Shea dog has had on our neighborhood, and how we don't feel safe in our own neighborhood anymore. And, um, and just, um, would like the board to, um, realize and perhaps protect us from what we consider a dangerous animal.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just have a statement, um, as far as it goes with the hearing thus far. And that is that once we're made aware of the dangers of a dog through the animal control officer and through the neighbors, um, we have an obligation to take, uh, that, uh, the two incidents, and it may be a third one. You know, Brian's always been a gentleman as far as any encounter I've had with him, but, um, he's obviously not a good dog owner. And I think that, um, we're reaching a point where we have to take Bill's recommendation to, uh, take the dog and, uh, you know, you either find him a home or he finds that he's put down.
I agree with that, too. I just would like to hear from everybody before we make that final decision, but I mean, that's the way it's leaning. Is there anybody else that would like to come up, please?
A severe incident.
Yes.
We live two houses down-
Just identify yourself, please.
Is it? Oh, I'm Thomas Lemire, I live on Furness Lane.
Okay.
Um, one house down from Bernie, and, um-
That's my neighbor.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
This is my friend. Uh, one morning, we have two dogs, I let them outside, and, um, I heard some barking. I didn't see what happened. Uh, there's no severe injuries, but I came on, uh, my back porch, and Brian's dog, which I didn't even know it was his dog at the time, uh, 'cause I'm new to the neighborhood, but he was attacking one of my dogs. And I quickly broke it up, and, um, the dog ran the other way and kinda started running all the way, and it came out, I had no idea where he came from, and, um, my, he, he ran off my porch. And, uh, my other dog, I would notice later that day, I didn't see what happened, but he had some bite marks on his ears, nothing severe, but I couldn't, uh, can't say that I saw him bite it, but it happened to all happen that morning. I heard some barking and stuff, so. And I, I don't know, um, Brian personally at all, but just, I, I know Bernie and him, so. It's, oh, yeah, I'm aware of this whole situation.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name is Kathy Seer. I own Yorkies Inc. I've been doing dog rescue for over fifteen years. Thirteen of those have been with Yorkies Inc. I'm the sole proprietor and owner of that rescue. I don't know any of you. The only person really I know are actually Laura and Rick, who have fostered me the last couple of years. I have no connection with anyone. I've only been told the stories that I've been hearing before we came in here tonight. This poor woman lost her dog in April. It seems like really nothing was done but sent a letter. She's got a court pending case, which he's not responding to, this Brian Shea. I do not know him from a hole or atom either. This woman has been bitten. She's got something on her arm, her hands. I assume that her dog-walking business has taken effect by her injuries. Two new people in the neighborhood have, the reason why they have a less severe incident is because they actually own German Shepherds. That's a little bit different than owning a New Yorkie. Her little Shitzu, I believe, Pekinese, is under twenty pounds. Mari was under five. There's been two incidences in the past two or three weeks in the news that you should be very, very concerned over. One is a Dudley man whose dog, who's been aggressive, has not mauled or killed, has just attacked a couple of dogs in the neighborhood, and a postman, I believe. That dog has been impounded since August, and has been kept at the kennels at the pound where he has to go and visit his dog. That dog is slated to be euthanized, and he has a hearing pending that. That just made the news a couple of nights ago. Prior to that, in Lowell, there was two pit bulls behind a fence. A little boy, seven years old, went up, and I don't know if you know any of these incidents that are hitting the news, went to pet the dogs, and the dog mauled him. That's behind a fence. It doesn't matter whether Mr. Shea puts a fence, starts walking his dog on a leash, becomes completely responsible. I love dogs. I do not wanna see any dog euthanized. But more importantly, I don't wanna see any innocent dog or an innocent human or child be mauled or you, or having to be euthanized because of another aggressive dog. I do anything in my power to save animals. That's what I was doing with Mari. These people are wonderful dog owners. They've been wonderful foster people. They are responsible dog owners. He's saying it wasn't quite an incident. Well, it wasn't quite an incident because it was a German Shepherd. There's now two little children living across the street from Laura and Rick, who are one and two years old. Are you in this town gonna wait till it happens to a human before you take responsibility, get that dog off the streets? You don't pawn it off on another person or send it to another town. This dog is aggressive and will do it again. These dogs can't be rehabbed. Believe me, I do rescue. We've got top dogs ten pounds and under. And when we have a dog that's completely aggressive and attacks for no reason with no, uh, it, no one's antagonizing it, no one's, uh, taking food or our toys away from it, this dog simply wants to attack. You can't stop what is instinctively happening with this dog. I feel horrendous about it. But in rescue, you know some dogs you can't save. And I feel as though this dog doesn't need to be taken away. This dog needs to be euthanized for the safety of your town, your people in your town, or the people you decide to pawn this dog off on. This dog is not rehabbable. I'm sorry. I, believe me, I know, I wish you could do. I wish it didn't happen to one of my own dogs. This is the fir- first time in my fifteen years that we've ever had a dog mauled. When I ever found out the dog had done it previously and was left to live in a yard without a fence, I was like, "You've got to be kidding. You've got to be kidding, Laura. This isn't, this is, can't, can't be happening." And she says, "No," and he's had a dog previous that was also aggressive. I don't know any of that as factual. The only thing I do know as factual is what you've been told, and they've all made an excuse for their behavior. She, you know, she's saying, "Well, I tried to get the dog off," and this, he's saying, "I left the dog for a second." He's saying it's not a really bad incident. This is all the same exact dog that's attacking for no apparent reason. And no one seems to address, "I don't care whether Mr. Shea is a responsible dog owner." He doesn't have control over this dog, nor will any of you or anyone who's going to rehab this dog, sadly. That, that is what you're dealing with. And before you get a Dudley or a Laurel, uh, Lowell incident in this town, you better take note, 'cause now I have. So if something doesn't happen, it's going to be on you. If this happens again, and this is an innocent, another innocent dog, or innocent human, or a postman, or a federal, there's gonna be lawsuits, because now it's happened multiple times. How, for one dog, for one pit bull mix? I don't understand why everyone's just saying, "Well, let's see what happens. Let's give him a this." him a this and let's give him a that.
We haven't made any decisions about anything yet, so.
I'm giving you, like I said, I don't know any one of you. I'm gonna turn around and walk away.
And that's your opinion, so just wait to see what we get to say about it.
And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to me, my dog's dead. That dog that was supposed to be given a chance at life will never get that chance. You're, you may, you have to make a decision. I'm telling you, even with the dog officer, this, this dog is not a, let's get him into the shelter and let's give him to another, a rescue. We don't take five-pound dogs that are aggressive like that. You're talking about a pit mix. That's not gonna happen.
Well, euthanize my dog the first time he bit. First time.
Yeah.
First time he bit.
Sadly. Don't, don't give these dogs opportunity, opportunity.
No.
And it doesn't matter to me what Mr. Shae wants or what he doesn't want. This is the dog.
No, we're just hearing-
If I had a biting dog, I would-
We're just trying to hear all the evidence, that's all.
And I'm just saying, like I said, I have nothing to win or lose here. I walk away tomorrow, I'm not even from this town.
Yeah, believe me, we'll take-
I'm just saying, I listened to the whole thing and I'm like, wow.
Yeah, believe me, we will definitely do the right thing.
This isn't Dudley. You, you have a chance to make it not a Dudley, not a Lowell or something like that. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have any comments? Can you have any input into this?
No.
No, okay. We hear from Mr. Shae?
Yeah. I don't want any, any comments from the audience.
I apologize for my-
And I don't want any comments from you, back to them. Please address me as the board and-
I apologize for my behavior.
Okay, thank you, sir.
First of all, I'd like to say I'm sorry about the incident that happened on people fools. We were out in my backyard, me and the dog. He's usually pretty good with stick clothes. I had turned around and he got the corner on me and apparently they were in the cul-de-sac area or wherever they were. And my dog run after his dog, or her dog, excuse me. And subsequently ended up dying. And I'm very sorry. I grew up with Pekingese. It was like looking at my dog. And as far as the second incident goes, you know, I really grabbed, they pointed out that they know when my, when my truck is there and when it's not there and all that stuff. These dogs were trained to go crap in my yard. My dog had been eating dog shit since his arrival. I thought it was duck shit. I really didn't know. The little dog came down the hill. I was standing with my dog and the dog went after it. And that's the truth of the matter. And they can say whatever they want. I'm very sorry. My dog was not highly human. He just doesn't like squirrels and little dogs. And that's all I have to say. I'll do whatever the town asks. And that's it. I just hope to keep my dog.
Board, any questions?
Mr. Shae, did I understand correctly that you-
And also, they brought up Smokey. This is the letter that I got after they ran over Smokey and left him for dead in the This harassment's been going on for a long time. I haven't been able to have cable in two years. Keep shutting off. They're just awful neighbors.
You shut off your cable?
I don't wanna go into it any further. My cable comes down on their property. And it's just gotta happen.
Anybody?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah.
Did I understand your description, Mr. Shae, that you were out with the dog in your backyard?
In both incidences, yes.
On that day?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the dog-
Both days.
The dog was loose. He wasn't on a leash.
The second, no.
No, he wasn't, okay. But you were there.
He's good, he's good-
But you were there.
Yes, standing next to him.
You were right there.
It doesn't, my dog shouldn't do what he did.
Okay. Now, when, before he attacked the dog-
Which dog?
The case we're talking about now.
The little dog? Okay, yes.
Yeah, the little dog. Where, where, did you see where the little dog was when your dog went after him?
It was about nine-thirty in the morning. It was my first day, I'm in the process of changing jobs. It was my first day home. I brought the dog out. He craps in the corner, in the very front corner of my lawn. I was standing next to him. All of a sudden, he raised up. I looked up, the little dog was coming down the hill. I ran after him, I tackled him, bit him maybe three times, and it was over.
I'm still trying to understand where the little dog that was attacked-
He was in my side-
Was, when your dog attacked him.
He was in my side yard.
In your yard?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you mean by coming down the hill?
Yeah. It's like kind of a bull ramble. And there was an unregistered truck in there. It's since been removed.
Okay. Just got nothing to do with the dog though, right?
I will keep him locked down. You know, in the summertime, he's in the cellar, it's nice and cool and yeah, just to rebut her.
Anybody else have any questions?
He's allowed, and another thing. If you look at a plot plan, my dog is only allowed in the front third of my yard. I don't even allow him two-thirds of my yard that above the house. I walk him at eight-thirty at night when people are watching the shows. I try and keep him away from other dogs. That's what I can say. And I'll do whatever you ask.
Any questions?
Yeah, you'll, you'll do anything for the neighbors or anything that we require?
Do anything. I was that way.
We have an obligation, Brian. You have to understand that. I think-
I understand. It's two dead dogs. Completely understand.
Brought it up. We, we have an obligation to the children that are, you know, waiting for school lessons and that.
He wouldn't allow them. I can take the food right out of his mouth when he's eating it. The only thing that's allowed to chew now is a ball and a broken-
Yeah, but you can't, you know, we as a board can't, in my opinion, can't trust the dog. It's my recommendation that you give it up. I can't speak to the board members still, however they feel, but I believe you get a dangerous situation and it's just a-
I don't believe so. I believe that he's restrained. He's, he's well-loved. He has my son and my daughter. We'll keep him under lockdown. We will be under lockdown forever. He will never be unleashed.
But you get the off chance that somebody leaves the back door open or, you know, you've gotta-
We've had these conversations with my son and my daughter about locking doors and keeping windows so he can't go out room. We will do whatever we need to do to keep the neighborhood and my dog safe. But, you know, these people, they did train their dog to crap in my yard and they knew it would only be a matter of time. And if that's not animal cruelty, I don't know what is.
You have anything else to add, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Come on.
Since he wants to bring up that incident, I have to clear my name, okay? He got a dog, Smokey. It was a little lamb. It was a harmless dog. When the dog was not a year old, him and his wife decided they're gonna go skiing in February. They leave the dog. Around eleven o'clock in the morning, this little dog is running around. It's snowing. We bring it into our house. At the time, I owned a little Yorkie. I fed it. I gave it water. Dried it off. I let it sit in the house all day. Now it's coming nighttime, him and his wife aren't home. What are we gonna do with the dog? We take the dog, we put it in our basement, near the furnace. Rick gets rags and things, puts it there. Next morning, they're still not home. So we get up and bring the dog back in. I feed the dog. Around eleven-thirty, him and his wife get home. And you know what they say? Oh, well, we knew somebody would take care of it. So that dog was our dog. It was in our yard. My husband would wash it. We gave it food. We watered it. Brian knows this, okay? I don't know what he's talking about a cable company. I have no idea what he's talking. Now, the dog gets very old. The dog, he actually had a collar and the dog catcher knows how many times he had to go catch the dog. But the dog actually would, the collar was enough to come over to our yard and sit and lay in our grass under our shady trees, okay? Now, the dog is old and the dog is blind and it's deaf. And it comes through his hedges. My husband's backing out to go to work. He tapped the dog. Yes, the dog went down. I called Brian right away. He had just left. He turned around. I'm crying, I'm all upset. Don't worry, the dog is old. Don't worry, the dog is put down. We took better care of Smokey than he took care of Smokey. We don't know what happened with us and Mr. Shae. All of a sudden now, he's not talking to us. We have nothing to do with his cable. We don't touch his cable. We don't do anything with his cable. We're quiet people. We wanna live, we just wanna live a normal existence. We bought a house here in Pembroke. That's all we wanna do is live a quiet life. That dog is not staying on that property. It's not staying on that property. If I end up in jail, the dog is not staying in the town of Pembroke. I'll call Channel Four, I'll call Channel Seven, and I'll call Charlie Baker. The dog needs to go. He is a terrible dog owner. He'll tell you from now till Tuesday how he's gonna take care of that dog, but he's not gonna take care of the dog. My little Yorkies never went in his yard. We're afraid of Mr. Shae. We're afraid of his dog. My little Yorkies did not have to poop in Mr. Shae's yard. So I just wanna make it clear, you know, we did have problems and my husband may have wrote that, but we are not touching his cable. We would not allow him to touch the cable. As a matter of fact, when we moved in, we decided to put our electric lines underground. We went over to Mr. Shae to be neighborly. We asked him, would you like to go in half season, paying the pole? Because the pole had to be on our, our property. No, I don't wanna pay for the pole. Okay, fine. Three weeks later, yeah, you know what? I think I wanna put my electric lines on your pole. You mind? No, we're neighborly people. Go ahead. Put your, put your lines on our pole. We've done nothing but tried to be nice to Mr. Shae. When he was getting the dog, and this is when I, when we called the cops, the cops said it's he say, she said. He said to me, I'm getting a rottweiler or a pit bull. It's gonna bite you, Laura, and there's gonna be nothing you can do because I have a homestead act. And I said, you know what? You don't even know what a homestead act is. And you know what? I'm in the process of trying to find out who Mr. Shae's homeowner is, because his homeowners will be canceled if they know he has, that's a number five dog on the list in Massachusetts to have. You have to notify your home insurance. Let's ask Mr. Shae if he's notified his homeowners that he has that dog. Because you know why? He'll cancel his insurance. Yes, I'm upset and I'm very sorry, but I really, you know, I just never, ever, ever, ever thought that one of my dogs would die. And I'm just really very upset and I do apologize. But I'm just letting you know that Mr. Shae, he's a good actor. That's all I can say. The dog is not staying on his property and I'm not moving.
Thank you.
I don't have to live with-
Bill, your, your recommendation again was to declare the dog dangerous and for you to seize the dog?
I can seize him. I wanna seize him. I don't want him, I don't think he should be, I don't think he should be losing.
I think that-
I think Mr. Shae has the right for his, his, everything that he has legally, he has his rights to, to appeal and all the different things.
Yeah.
But I want the dog. I want him seized and I want him with me. And I would just assume if Mr. Shae surrendered the dog to me, and then I just have the dog PTS. Because I think it's, it's, I don't see it as being any resolve anywhere as far as giving it to another rescue or anything like that. I had another dog that you guys had done that to, and I went through fifteen or twenty different rescues trying. And, and that was a, a case of a bad owner as well.
Yeah.
It's, once they, once they bite, no one wants to take the liability. It's, it's just that simple, you know? And I don't think it's, I, I, past histories and everything else, it's just not a good situation.
Yeah, being the chairman, I can't make a, a formal motion, but my feelings are that, that we should take the recommendation of you and that you should seize the dog immediately.
Mm-hmm.
And it should stay in custody and be euthanized.
Yep.
That would be my suggestion.
Yep.
I'll make that as a motion, Mr. Shae.
Thank you.
Second.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I do. So these dog hearings are one of the hardest things that we do as a board selection. It's so emotional, so personal to both sides, to the victims, to the dog owner, because they, they love their dog, family pet. But there comes a time that we, we have to make a tough decision. Back in April, it was the first death incidence of this one dog. So we took the recommendation of the animal patrol officer and we put on stringent restrictions on the dog. Well, that didn't work. So now here we are with the second incident, and I think, Bill, you're correct in saying it's time to seize the dog immediately. So I just wanted, I expressed that, that it's a very difficult decision for us every time we face one of these. And I agree with the motion, so when it comes time to vote, I'll be voting in, in favor.
Okay. So we do have a motion?
Yeah, and it makes, it makes sense from a liability standpoint as well as a public safety standpoint to vote with you, fill control of the dog.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a motion and I made a second. Could I just ask before we vote, if Mr. Hart could just quickly run through the procedure? If this vote passes, you will seize the dog.
Yep.
Bring him to the pound.
Yep.
Keep him there for a number of days.
Take care of him for ten days. Wait to see if there was an appeal.
Okay.
And if the appeal came from Plymouth District Court, and under the papers you gave me, I can have him put to sleep by the veterinarian.
Okay. I just wanted to walk through that from you so that I or the other members know exactly what we're voting for. Thank you.
I want you, I want you to understand too, is, is I care more for the animal than I do for the people. And the problem is, is that there are bad owners. And we've had a few cases of other bad owners. I would rather euthanize the owner than the dog, because most of the time the dog could, sometimes you could find another place to put the dog. But in a situation like this, you really, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be hard-pressed to find anything that's gonna be safe.
I think we have to recog-
And that's the most important thing, safety.
Yeah, I think we have to recognize that as well. Thank you, Mr. Shae.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do I have to stand? Do you want me to stand?
Do you want me to stand?
Ah, please.
Just curious, what's to stop Mr. Shea from going out next month and buying another similar type dog?
Nothing.
Nothing? So we'd have to go through this process? Do we have to wait for another incident before we can go through this process again?
Well, I think what some of the towns said is what the lady that got up here and testified. I think some of the towns are trying to ban certain types of animals from being in the towns.
Yep.
You know, whether it's legal or not, the Attorney General will approve it or whatever. I think maybe it's time for a town bylaw that we ban these type of dogs from here. Insurance companies won't handle them. They won't take care of anybody's homes or anything that has these types of animals, so...
So us as residents of the town to be more proactive, is that something that we could initiate on a... Some kind of a...
A petition?
Yeah.
Yeah, most certainly you can do that.
To fast-track it?
It really takes 10 signatures to get it on town meeting this coming spring.
Okay.
10, is that right, Sabrina?
Thank you. Just count the days before town meeting, which is usually the end of April. So they can get it in plenty of time so it's not thrown out of technicality. Can it be worded in layman's terms or does this have to be legalese?
Do you have time to stop in the Selectmen's office? I'll give you the... It's on our website, too. How to file a petition article.
Thank you. Yes.
I have one more question. What are the laws here in Pembroke? What are actually the laws for dogs and how many bites?
Well, you can probably get that on the town bylaws.
Okay, so off-hand, you don't know?
It's on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the website. There is quite a few incidents, but this part of the incident here coming before the Board of Selectmen for hearing is we make that decision whether we think that the dog should be put down or whatever. So I, you know, second time around, that's way too much for me.
Right, because we're living it. We're actually living this.
Yeah, I understand that.
We've had our one bite and he had his one bite. And now he's had his two bites.
Yeah. And what I said earlier, I euthanized my dog because he's a woman that had a little dog in her hand. And I had him euthanized immediately. So it's just something you have to do.
I want to thank you all.
That's unfortunate.
I'm sorry if I feel like I'm a little lightheaded, but it's still really raw in me and, you know...
Yeah. He has a right to appeal it and listen to the Third District Court. And the judge can...
And as long as... I want to thank you that while he's going through this process, the dog be somewhere else other than his property.
It'll be seized by the Animal Control Officer.
I want to thank you very much for that. That makes me feel a lot better. Thank you.
Okay.
Because I know nobody in their right mind is going to let him take that dog back. So I appreciate it and I thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to say something about the dog.
Can we just have one vote to make here by the board?
Okay, go ahead.
And I think we're ready to make our decision. We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of having the dog picked up?
Does the other lady have something that's relevant to the...
Is it relevant to what we're going to vote on?
Well, it was about, like you said, with the town with pit bulls.